Good evening, everybody. Participants in our budget meeting, welcome. Welcome. Thank you, City Clerk. Thank you, George, our Council Secretary. You're here. Today's evening, we will begin with the assessor budget, and that will be on page nine.
Counsel Protem?
Yes, sir.
Today is Holy Thursday. In Catholic religion, it's a holy day of obligation.
Yes.
So I'm going to have to leave to go to Mass here at about 6:10, and probably going to miss out on the Parks and Recreation budget. And just a couple...
We'll try to be quick.
Oh, no. Just in case. Okay.
So we'll try to do the best we can.
So, but anyway...
I'm in the same boat you are.
Yeah. I looked at the budget, and if anything, I mean, it's a very slight increase, and that's due to the fact that she has to... We had to pay some of our part-time people more to keep them. And we still don't have a full-time coordinator at the Eaton Center.
Counselman?
Yeah.
Counselman, we're starting with the assessor, and we're going to let her go through her, and then we'll get to the recreation.
Okay. So at 6:05, if I've got to leave in five minutes, you're going to let me talk then?
It's 5:05.
It's 5:05 right now.
No, at 6:05, and I have to leave at 6:10.
Yes, I'll let...
You'll let me have five minutes then?
Yeah, I'll give you some time.
If we haven't got to Parks and Rec yet.
I will give you some time, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks a lot. Whoops.
Time to wake up. You may begin.
Hello, everyone. As you know, Cindy King, Comptroller. I do want to say, right off the bat, unfortunately, the assessor's amount that we have in the budget here is not what she had sent over. Unfortunately, I have some numbers that are a little bit higher than what she had suggested. So if we can maybe put hers off until next...
Well, you can just give us the updated amount.
Can you give us the updated numbers as we go through?
I mean, she's under contract, so regardless, we're approving regardless.
Right.
That's fine.
So my contract's based on rate of inflation. The state rate of inflation was 5% this year. So the correct number for what it was last year to this year should be $347,125.80. So it is lower than what is written down. I mean, I can take that other number if you'd like to give it, but that is not what my contract said.
$347,125.80.
Thank you, Ma. Yep, that's it. And so that is what my contract would be for this upcoming year. And then I have a request for some new chairs. We bought chairs back in 2000, and they've literally all fallen apart. Like, the arms are falling off, and they won't stay up anymore. And they were junk, so...
Where did you buy the chairs at?
Staples. We have that Staples Advantage.
In 2000, you bought them?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's been a little over 23 years. I think you...
I mean, 2000... Sorry. 2020. Sorry.
Two years old?
They're three years old now. And yeah, they're just falling apart. Like, the arms are coming off, and they won't stay up, and...
Where are you going to purchase the next ones from?
Well, I had asked a couple people. I'm shopping around to see what's best. The clerks have chairs that they've had for about five years that seem to be holding up pretty well. So I was looking at what they had purchased prior. They also got them through Staples, but they're a different brand. So Staples is just kind of, you know, the distributor. It's a different brand of chair. I'm not sure exactly which ones yet, but I'd like to get new ones so my people can sit comfortably without back pain and arm pain.
So is that under Supplies or under the last line?
That last line.
In the blue, where it says, "New desk chairs, $1,000."
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Counsel Protem?
Yes, sir.
And I'm just going to ask, and I'm just going to make the ask, what if we went 50/50 on them?
What do you mean, 50/50?
Like, we paid... Because I know you guys are so contracted out from us, right?
Right. But my contract details that you are to provide all equipment for us to do our jobs. So I feel like chairs are part of that equipment because my people can't sit on the floor to work. So, I mean, and it's your stuff. It's not like we take any of this when we go. The only thing I've ever purchased for...
You're not going nowhere. You're going to stay with us for a long time.
I hope so.
Promise.
The only thing that I've ever bought is I bought an extra desk for my office that is mine for the previous assessor, Tony, who does consulting with us still. So... But everything else has always been provided through the city. And right now, we're just scavenging stuff. So like, the library was throwing out all their old stuff. We have half of their old chairs right now because we just need something to sit on.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, I'd be okay with it. I mean, Counsel Protem...
Well, I got it noted here, and when we come to the final approval and we go overall, we can discuss that. And if we all feel that how you feel, we can make it a... But, you know, according to her contract, I don't see a way out of it anyway, so...
I promise not to buy really expensive chairs.
I would rather you buy more... Something a little higher end rather than buying...
Yes. I don't want chairs to fall apart with them.
At the end of that day, you need the assessor to be comfortable when she's assessing our property.
Make sure they got five legs on them, too. No, seriously. The five-legged chairs instead of the four, so they're anti-tip.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I mean, that's really the only major request we have. I know that we're getting a GIS system, and that's going through other people's budgets and stuff. But I just want to say how amazing that will be for the assessor's office. I know it's not part of our budget, but that really will help us to do our job way more efficiently. So that's... I hope you guys approve that for the other budget. But that's it. That's all I really have.
5%, I mean, rate of inflation. I think you're doing a pretty good job.
Thanks. I did bring a copy of the L4022, and that's the form we use to report to the state for the new upcoming year. And I just wanted to let you guys know that we have an additional $221,367.06 in additions for taxable value for the year. So that should equate to over an additional $1 million in revenue.
That's great. Thank you so much for that number.
That's going to be coming in. Just, I thought you guys would want to know ahead of time. That's what the projection...
Do you email that to us when you get a chance?
Sure. I'd be happy to, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are you all set with your...
That's all I've got.
There's any other questions for the assessor?
We've got...
I guess you're done.
Awesome.
I told you we're going to adjourn you quickly. Okay, there you go.
All right. Well, thank you all very much. I appreciate your time. And if you have any questions, you guys have my phone number and email, and I'm happy to talk to anyone. And I'll send you over that form.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Next on our agenda is the clerk, and that's on page 11.
Oh, I've got a lot to say about this one.
Go for it.
Okay. I don't think there's much change in this one. The salaries, I did do a 5% increase across the board for all. And unless you have any questions, you want to go line by line, there really isn't anything any different in this one.
Yeah, please, do you mind going line by line?
Not at all.
It seems like it went down while we're looking at it. So the first one, who's that for? Is that for the Madam Clerk?
Your salary. Elect, that's correct.
So how come it shows like it's going down from 102 to 91?
That's the projected activity. And it's based on... Your salary elect is based on your... You guys decide that.
No, it's... The local compensation board meets every... I believe it's... They'll meet, I think, December of this year. And they determine... I think they go out and they check other communities and compare the thing, and then they would bring it, their recommendation, to council for approval.
We have to actively reject it.
Yes.
But not say we're not going to accept it, which we've done in years, but otherwise, so the salary is set. So you're elected to the office, you get the set salary.
And this decision was made by council two years ago.
Correct.
You remember? Yeah.
So this new salary rate, I believe it went into effect in January.
This one was.
Yes.
I don't know what this one...
The 102 is just projected activity.
Okay.
Yeah. That...
The salary is $91,240.
That's correct. Your new salaries for the year is recommended budget of $151,587. Because last year it was at $144,369, I think that the projected is probably a little bit high, probably based on what your overtime was.
Overtime is separate.
Overtime would be different. A different line.
I can only tell you, I wrote down...
Counsel Protem?
Yes.
Where's the breakdown on the salaries that we're supposed to be getting?
I sent it to you.
You emailed them to us? I wanted to... I thought we'd get hard copies of them.
You need to see this?
Well, it's not all of them, though.
Well, it's got the deputy and the clerical, and it tells you which ones make what.
And I wrote it down because I didn't know.
Well, no, just what we're covering today.
I know. Why can't we just get them all?
I do have them all. And they are printed here, and I do have hard copy.
So if you can get them to us ASAP, I appreciate it.
Right here. Would you like them right now?
Okay. If you can pass them out, I appreciate it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was salaries.
No, we want to get the salary breakdown in every department.
Okay. I will work on that and get it to you. I do apologize. This has just been really a lot of... Everything needed to come in together all at once. And I had interviews today, so there's not a lot of time for just one person to put all this together. What I gave you last night was for what today's presentation is. I will get you the rest of everybody's salaries breakdown. I don't know. Middle of next week, I hope.
Included in ours is the three employees.
That is correct.
So you got the deputy, clerical one, and clerical three.
Yes.
For what? For the sal...
So what's included right now, right, Cindy?
In salaries.
In salaries is for the deputy, clerk one, and clerk three. So we have three employees in there.
So the question is, I mean, there's almost $40,000 difference from last year to this year, from 110 to 151,587.
But that's only... I'm sorry. That's only... That's expanded through January... Or through March 31st, correct? Had that 110.
110 is through 330. The actual budget amount, 42223, was $144,369.
Yes.
Thank you.
So we've got to be careful on how we read the columns.
Yes. Okay. Part-time, we're at 48.5. And I believe that is because it was at 13.5. Isn't that because we're putting one at one individual? Ms. North?
Well, we're going to... The 13.5 was for our scanning and cleaning on all of our filings so that we have room. And we're going to go digital on a lot of the minutes. That's what we're in the process for. That was the 13.5. Then I asked for additional money this year because we don't have the staff to compose and to be at the meetings for the policy and procedures manual that we want to redo. So I've been in conversation with our Corporation Council, and we're in a... And of course, we have a presidential year next year, so we really don't have the time. We want to hire a part-timer to do that.
Is that part-timer only going to be for like six months, and then they can no longer be there? Or how would that work? And then would you rather just hold off on that money and then amend the budget? And I'm just... I'm thinking out loud.
Yeah. I know it's a priority to do. I don't know about amending the budget. That'd be up to you.
I don't care for amending the budget. Just leave it for now. If she doesn't use it, it's covered during...
It's what I would prefer, is that we just left it as a placeholder. And if we don't use it, it goes back right into the fund balance.
Counsel Chair?
Counselor?
Yeah. The law provides, and all the courts are doing it, everyone's doing it, that the digital image can now be the record, not the actual... And so unless we have room to store all that paper, it has to be done. But it doesn't... Especially if you're not set up to start doing it. It doesn't do it itself.
Just so you know, we... Civic Plus, which you all approved for the agenda and minute preparation, we had our initial meeting with them, and we're moving forward on the agenda packets. But we have been working, I probably since January, on scanning all of our council minutes in. So we're back to the '80s now. So we started... So we're getting there. I mean, we got them back from the '50s, too, so...
No more police driving the packet out to your house the night before. The kids in the neighborhood say, "Why are the police eyes at your house?"
Because you're a bad boy. Okay. Next line.
Your retiree, previous years, that is just their payout. We have one more for 10,373 for this year. And your overtime is your next item. And we are at $29,261, which I believe is because of elections that we decided to put...
Well, that's hospitalization, 29.
Oh, my gosh, I need a...
Overtime is $12,000.
Yeah, I was going to say, because that was a little high on overtime. I was going to say, Glenn?
I'm concerned with that number.
I'm so sorry. You know, I need coffee.
That's from McDonald's.
I'm concerned with $12,000. I don't know... I'm afraid that's not enough. With election time coming up, our council secretary trying to get all the paperwork out, I'm just afraid. Well, I mean, again, I think that can always be amended, though, right?
That can be amended, and...
And nobody ever turns on the clerk. I know that for sure.
And so far, we've only used $5,000. So we're projecting that we'll use $7,000. And then for next year, for election year, that still gives us an extra $5,000.
Well, we got this November, too, for an election.
Yeah, you're... This is an off-year election.
That would be the new year.
No. That's going to be this coming November.
This November would be the new year. We start in July.
Well, yeah, that would be the new... Yes.
Right.
Yes. Okay.
Basically, we have money left over from this year.
We do, but you can't move it.
No. That goes right back to the general fund.
Yeah, I'm saying...
And then we'll have to reallocate money. I just want to make sure that the elections are covered. That's our... You know, that's the biggest thing that we can do here, is the elections, and make sure our people are properly paid for that.
We can always add right now if you'd like and make it a placeholder. Or we can amend it at the end of the...
That would be good.
We need to. So it's up to you.
Counsel Protem?
Yes, sir.
We can even go to maybe $15,000 and just have that extra $3,000 there as a placeholder.
Okay. Again, this is just the clerks. We do have funds in the elections for this.
Okay. Then let's hold off on that.
Okay. Okay.
Counsel Chair?
Yes.
Glenn, are you having problems getting people to work the elections? Because it's like, for the training, it's $130, right? Totally.
We're going to go to elections here.
Yeah, we're going to do that.
We'll do elections next.
Yeah, we'll talk about that in a minute.
Next is hospital insurance. We budgeted $29,261. Last year, we budgeted 60. I think that was a little high, since we're only at 13 right now through March 30th. So we're trending, figuring that $29,000 would be a reasonable amount to budget for hospital insurance.
I've got a question for you, Counsel.
Yes.
Okay. So we budgeted $29,261, which is much lower than a 60,981. So if we don't even approach that much money, is there, when you do a budget amendment and you take something out of one account and put it in another, would that, like, say, come out of that budget if we're getting close to the end?
Yes.
Okay. So that's where they come...
Yes.
Switch back and forth.
That's why I like to have a little bit of, you know, play money in there, just in case. Life insurance is at 962. That's again...
Why did it drop?
Well, we haven't used it yet. We got $1,222 in there, and nothing has been posted to there. So I really think that the life insurance is probably going to be off, falling under the medical insurance. But right now, we just put it as a placeholder.
That's fine.
Your government pension, we put that out separately because last year it was put into fringe benefits. I pulled it all out and put it under government pension.
Yes.
Again, your fringe benefits is your FICA only, and that is just a 7.65% of all your salaries. Supplies, we went with $5,000 just because of historical. We had $5,000 last year. You only... So far, there's only been $22,811 spent through March 30th. So I think $5,000 is a fair...
You mean $2,800?
$2,811, yes.
We had a discussion on what council wanted the other day, and we were talking about supplies. Now, do we have... Was there supplies in that line item for us or not?
I want to say it's $500 for council?
Yes.
I think it's been $500 for that.
Can I suggest that everything goes through the clerk? I don't know if this is good for everybody, go through the clerk's office. Say if we need paper, pens...
You do, and we charge your account.
And you charge your account. So why don't we just move that account over? Is that possible? That way, it all is kept tracked in one spot, like, you know, business cards?
You can. You can. Or you can put it under general fund. It's going to be...
Well, it's under council right now.
Yeah, it's under...
It's under council. Well, do we want to keep it under? Probably. Do we want to move it over to clerk and just have it all under?
I would keep it under council.
Yeah, just so that you can... Okay. I'm just going through, trying to make things easy. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
We said we were going to update it, too, by the way.
Yep.
Deuce members, $400.
Yep.
Contractual services, $8,000.
And what does that count for, contractual services?
Yes, and the codification of your ordinances, that...
Okay.
It's... Sorry. So you've got your animal licensing, your business licensing, the software that we have to pay for every year, and mostly the codification of the ordinances.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mileage is just reimbursement, $500. Travel and education, we did upgrade that to $5,000 because they do want to do a couple seminars this year for the deputy as well as the clerk.
Thank you. Now, repair and maintenance equipment was only $2,000.
Well, we didn't bunch anything for that.
Yeah, I know. But we ran into a snafu here the last few years that we were not aware of, where her giant Rolodex machine was broken. And I saw somebody cranking that thing by hand, and I just about went through the roof. And we paid, I don't know, $1,500 for somebody to come in and say it was broken and walk out the door. And then we paid $1,000 or so to fix it ourselves. So why aren't we putting something in there so they can fix things with it?
It's historical that we've never had any funds in the repairs and maintenance, but we gladly put some in for a placeholder.
I mean, would you like to have something for that?
I'm just trying to think, Counsel Chair Protem, of what other equipment...
We fixed that equipment for you already.
We did fix that. And I got to do a budget amendment to transfer.
Yeah, I know. But I'm just saying, she didn't have any money to fix it, and we went two years without it.
We had $1,000 in... You'll see it in election. And that's where I'm going to take it from for that. So we're doing a budget amendment.
Well, I don't think it should come out of elections for that.
Well, it's part of... We're just... I'm doing a budget amendment, too.
To move funds from one to the other.
I mean, two years that you sat there and didn't have this thing, I mean, two years that you sat there and didn't have this thing, and I just about lost my...
I know. I appreciate you. The whole office appreciates you.
We can put a placeholder there if you'd like. Do you want two thousand dollars?
Yeah.
That would be comfortable.
Is that good, Lynn? That's what you need, or?
And I'm just gonna, and I'm, I'm just speaking out loud. I don't know if it's, uh, because we can always do a budget amendment.
Yes.
Well, I mean, we could, instead of doing amendment, you put it in here and be done with it.
Yeah, I, I would prefer to have it in the budget.
Would you?
Yeah, I would. Um, coming forward with budget amendments all the time is just, it gets really convoluted, and if we can keep things and get comfortable with the directors staying in their budget, then that, instead of going, oh, I can just go do a budget amendment, that has to come out of fund balance. And every time we touch that fund balance, we're taking more money out of that, and it's just trickling away.
Okay, you can write a note of it.
I mean, I put a note here, and I changed the total amount by two thousand.
Especially since we're, the budget is not approved yet. So this is the time that we should be making a change.
And we just saved some money off of the assessor's office, so.
Oh, and, Council Chair Protam. A former council person who says the budget is a living, breathing document, it can always be changed. No, it's not, and that's how you tell, like, if you're an officer or treasurer of like, uh, when I was treasurer of the Quantiscope, if every year the raffle, the cash that comes in, all of a sudden, it's not two hundred dollars, it's ten dollars, then you know something's wrong. The budget's to be followed.
Right. So, uh, so that's it for Clerk's Office. I do not have anything for capital outlay. As I had stated earlier, we had taken out capital outlay. Very few departments had gotten some capital outlay so that we could balance the budget. So next, we're gonna go to elections. Are we okay with that?
Is there any other questions on this?
No.
Okay, now, elections is on page seven. Page seven, page seven. How you doing, buddy?
Okay, now here, we did, uh, do more for part-time. Actually, we had budgeted last year a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, and this year we budgeted a hundred and sixty thousand. So this is where the part-time for elections is gonna be a little bit higher due to the, this year actually being election year. And then our overtime, we budgeted sixty-five hundred last year, and we're going to budget twenty thousand this year.
So that comes in for the other employees, okay.
Yes.
So of that new one, so we, right now, we're planning on three elections for this next fiscal year. This August, November, and then we're gonna have the presidential primary in February, which we do get reimbursed for.
And that presidential one, I know we just spoke about this, you'll have nine days of an election, correct?
We will have, I have, but, so a lot of this is for Proposition Two.
Yes.
We're awaiting, is it okay if I... We're awaiting direction from the state on how they're going to handle it, but because of the passage last year of Proposition Two, we will have early in-person voting, we will have a permanent absentee voter ballot list, we will have, um, well, this is state-funded absentee voter ballot boxes. We may need to place another one. They're, they're, um, recommending one drop box for every fifteen thousand registered voters. We're on the cusp for that third one right now, so I still have to wait. We have two right now. You know, we have one here, and we have one down at the JFK. There's also gonna be state-funded return postage on AV applications and AV ballots. So, okay, that was the ballot drop box. Early voting. The voters will have the right to at least nine days of early voting, and we'll get down to that when we do the capital outlay too, because that's where we put money in for the capital outlay.
That's in February, huh?
So that's, I think right now it's February twenty-seventh. I don't know if it's firm yet, because...
Well, they haven't given, uh, I've been reading on it.
So it's only February, then November, or there's nothing in August?
There'll be probably August, too.
Oh, there's August, too, for the president?
It wasn't for the president, no.
No.
You're saying this August will have it?
No.
The nine days?
We don't know, no, 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 no. That doesn't have to go into effect. And actually, you guys, Prop Two is only, so you have to be aware of this, too. Prop Two is only for statewide and, um, so gubernatorial and federal elections. It's not for local, but for consistency, most of the municipalities are going to do it, and for us, it would be the odd year. So, but I think then that would, the cost would be on us. Okay?
I would look.
So, um, for local elections, jurisdictions have the option of providing early voting. But what is that gonna do to the voters? You know, they're gonna see...
We voted yes for Proposal Two, so I'm just...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So implementation of early voting will require changes to our programming of the voting equipment to ensure ballots can be tabulated prior to the election day with the results reports not run until election day itself. It also, it, it, it's going to require a lot of things that we don't know about yet. You know what I mean? It's gonna require equipment, it's gonna require, um, workers. You're gonna have to man that precinct. If we have two of them here for early voting, you're gonna have at least five people, you know, for nine days.
And it'll all be here at City Hall?
No, we haven't placed it yet. We haven't decided yet. We don't know how it's gonna go. We, we're waiting for directions. We haven't gotten anybody's okay, but we were thinking here. For at least, for at least one.
Okay, yeah.
Here would be ideal, then, because we don't know what are you gonna do with the calculator after, at the end of the night. If you guys don't know, that our voting, our pit crews back there, we can pull it out and put it right in there. So we, Dana and I have been in a lot of discussion about it, but we just don't know from Lancing yet either. Okay.
You, you have to be situated for people to come in. I know in years past, they'll come in with an attorney, and they'll, or like an expired driver's license, they wanna register to vote and vote right then. That takes them looking over, I know.
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to stop at the clerk's office and do that.
No, but I mean, for the, for the general election, not for the early voting.
For any voting, if they wanna register?
Yeah.
Same day registration.
Yeah.
All right, next.
Okay, moving on. We have fringe benefits, which is just FICO. Uh, materials and supplies, we've got twenty-five thousand in there. Last year, we had nineteen thousand, so we're going up to twenty-five, probably because of elections. Uh, contractual services, we did budget a little bit higher at sixty-five thousand in here, where last year we were at fifty-six-five. Uh, contractual services.
That's our maintenance on our, yeah, equipment, our yearly maintenance. I don't know if you guys recall.
Into the link.
For, um, all the tabulators, we're covered under the maintenance agreement through the county or the state for the first five years. Last budget year, we had to put in an extra twenty thou, um, pretty close to twenty thousand for a yearly maintenance, um, agreement. So that, that upped it last year. So that's in there. All of your coding, all of your, um...
Recording in progress.
Are, are we expected to see an additional twenty grand every, or ten thousand dollars every year, or?
No, no, but we have three elections, and we have, and don't forget, we're gonna be reimbursed for some of this, too. We will have to keep track of, for the presidential primary.
Okay, mileage, a thousand dollars. Last year, we budgeted seven hundred and fifty. A thousand dollars for repairs and maintenance on equipment, and thirty thousand dollars for capital outlay.
And that would be for the change?
Election equipment.
That would be for the extra, the early voting, the early voting. You know, we, um, we may have to get new tabulators, they got new tabulators out, new laptops. We'll have to outfit two new precincts.
Where are we budgeting for, if you do have the additional nine days and having to have people that you're paying a hundred and thirty, thirty dollars a day, what's that under?
The part-time.
Part-time?
Yes, that's why it went from one twenty-seven to one sixty.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that we had enough in there.
In, in addition to that, too, we will be, Dana and I will be meeting with our election, our election commission, just so that you know, our municipality is one of the lowest-paid precinct workers. So we do wanna discuss that and see how much, how we can fit that in.
We also give volunteers from NHS, don't we?
What's that?
The volunteers from NHS?
Yes, we have a volunteer at each precinct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council members?
Okay.
All good?
Looks like you're all good, dear, uh, Ms. Clerk.
Thank you.
I, I, you know, I hold myself up from saying, Madam Clerk. It just seems so. Okay, so our next, our next is Parks and Recreation on page twenty-six.
There it is, Tommy.
I gotta go.
Okay, Tom, let her go through her thing.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. We have time.
Page is it on there, Council Protam?
Page twenty-six.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Kim Lawrence, I'm Director of Parks and Recreation. I'd like to, first, before we get going, introduce our new Parks and Recreation Deputy Director that we have in the back room, Anthony, Anthony Smith.
Welcome aboard.
He comes with us with a lot of Parks and Recreation knowledge and used to work for the Howell Parks and Recreation Department. So we're excited to have him, and he has an emphasis in youth programming, which we really want to dive into. So I'm excited to see what else we can do in regards to that. Our department, as you know, has director, deputy director, recreation coordinator, one full-time senior coordinator, the clerk one at the Canfield Center, clerk two at the Canfield Center, and a part-time senior coordinator at the Eaton Center. And we have about forty part-time employees in our department. Some of them are year-round part-time employees, and some of them are just seasonal. That's kind of the description of what our staff is, so I guess we can go ahead and get started on the budget. Starting with the recreation department.
Do you wanna go line by line?
Yeah, let's just do that. I guess I should just pretty much entertain the questions. Salaries, um, they are up a little bit because we ended up taking on another staff person from City Hall that signed for the position in Parks and Recreation, so...
Where would that person be working?
She's working in the front. So we have a, a front person, and we have also a clerk two in the back.
Also with a five percent increase that was put across the board as a placeholder?
Um, those two positions are union positions, so...
I'm talking about...
For everybody, union, and I wasn't clear on that, so. And, um, let's see. Going down to part-time, the reason that has went up is because we've had to increase our hourly wage for the part-time people to get them to actually come to work for us, and then also to stay, um, at work with us, because salaries have went way up, as you guys know, because of COVID, and people really not wanting to work now.
And if I'm not mistaken, you were paying like twelve, thirteen dollars an hour, right?
Well, we were about thirteen. Now we're up to about fifteen, and depending on the position, it could be up to eighteen.
That's okay.
How many, how many part-time positions do we have?
We have about forty.
Forty?
Forty, and, um, a part of them are full-year-round, uh, part-time employees not working more than twenty-eight hours. And then, um, the other, um, people are just seasonal, like through the summer. Overtime was increased because we have a lot of programming that we added, and the staff actually helps work the nights of the events. We have the concerts. They help with, um, the Spirit Festival. We did have to do a lot more overtime because we were short-staffed for so long. We didn't have a deputy, we didn't have a front desk person. So with that, uh, you know, the load was carried by who was left, basically. Let's see, the others, uh, pretty much are by the controller. Supplies, um, that has changed and different because they've reallocated some of the, um, expenses to other accounts. They were, I guess, misfiled or misappropriated. So she's kind of cleaning up or doing some housekeeping type things. Utilities went up because of the splash pad. We actually have it in operation. We ran it all last summer, and we came in with a huge, um, bill for it, so...
What was that for? Say that again?
For our splash pad, for the water bill. And, um, you know, they enjoyed having that running, so it will be running again this year.
The one on Silvery Lane?
Uh, yes, at Van Houten Park, yeah.
While we're on the splash pad, real quick, um, how much does that cost us to run that? How much is our water bill there?
Well, the one bill that I saw was about thirty thousand, and I don't think that was the only bill, but we got it after the season ended, so, um, do you remember what the other one?
You're talking at least forty thousand dollars for a water bill, and have we looked into to recycle the water? How much it costs?
We have, and the previous director, when it was built, did as well, and, um, it's very expensive to have that type of system. More expensive than it is to, um, actually just pay the water bill and have the water run clear, because you've gotta keep the water clean, you've gotta have the tank underneath. Most of the cities that have the splash pads do not have the recycled water because of the cost.
We're paying at least forty thousand a year, and now with the increase, I mean, you're paying fifty thousand, so five years, you have quarter a million dollars, I mean, do you know how much that would cost to do this, something like that?
I don't have that figure off the top of my head, no.
Now, does, you know, with that splash pad... Does that run when no one is in the splash pad area?
It does not. Um, it runs during the summer, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. We don't open it until, um, after Memorial Day, and, um, it has to be over seventy degrees as well.
No, my question is, if you got a bunch of kids there playing, but nobody's in the splash pad area, shouldn't that water be somehow?
There's a button the kids have to push to get the water.
And it's on a timer?
Yeah, well, it's, it's, after they push the button, it's, it times for so long, then it shuts off.
That's what I'm saying, so it's timed, so it shuts off at a certain amount of time?
Yes.
Okay.
Kinda like the whirlpools do in the hotels.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we change it to like maybe over eighty degrees? I mean, seventy is still nice.
We could. I mean, you, you might get an uplift from the people who use it. It's one of our community parks, and a lot of people, the, the year, the first year I became director, when the splash pad wasn't working, we had a lot of complaints from it not working, so...
You did, you're doing a great job, honestly.
We tried to get it up and running as soon as we could, but there were a lot of problems with it, so...
Question, and I'm just kinda thinking out loud, Council Protam, is that okay with you? Council Protam?
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, uh, kinda like Councilman Wanto was saying, thinking long-term, you know, three years, four years, it gets a little expensive. Have we ever maybe anticipated maybe doing a pool?
That actually is in, um, the master plan for the South End Recreation Center. Years ago...
Outdoor pool?
I'm sorry?
An outdoor.
An outdoor pool. But that plan, to make that happen, we would have had to purchase the property next to the Richard A. Young Center, and, um, they didn't purchase it when it was for sale, so we'd have to wait again till the next time that property becomes up for sale. We're kinda landlack, lacked, unfortunately, so, all right, so... Talked about supplies.
Can I just say something about this utility? This is not water. Oh, wait, yes, it is. I'm sorry. Yeah, it's water. It just, it was fifteen thousand, twenty-five, twenty, fifteen, twenty... Twenty-seven thousand dollars to run that splash pool, that splash pad in July.
Just for the splash pad? And the one for one month?
Um, I think it was, I had one bill.
Uh, it was July twenty, twenty-two, so, yeah.
And just so you know, though, with that park, um, with the splash pad, we do get a lot of people from all over the city that comes to use that. It's, it's not just, you know, people in that neighborhood, so. And, and I've realized that, actually realized that the year that the splash pad was broken, because we got calls from everywhere in the city.
Imagine if we had a pool there? We'd have people from all over the city.
Be nice.
It'd probably be a little cheaper.
I don't know. I hear pools are pretty expensive, too.
Not constantly running the water that's...
That's true.
Lot of liability there, too.
You have blood cards.
Okay. Going on here, uh, contractual services.
How about lease payments? What, what is that?
That is the director's car.
The director's car?
The director's car.
Where is that, under Council chair?
Lease payment.
Under lease payments.
So which, which car are you driving?
That's that little black Fusion that Ken used to drive. But I am actually in the process of turning it in for a different one because of the insurance that they need to have for it.
I thought all that stuff has to come through council first.
It does. I'm just getting the information right now. I haven't come to council yet because I don't, I just made the call yesterday.
Because I, I know previously, in previous years, we tried to put a kibosh of all these cars going out, and I'd still like to keep control of how many cars are leaving, you know?
Right. I, like I said, I just made the call yesterday. It's actually, the lease is like way overdue. I haven't had time to do anything with it, but I made the call to start the process to get the information, and then I'll come to council after I get the information.
Just to let everybody know, um, council members here, because I made the mistake when I first came on council, just because you approve a budget for a car doesn't mean you automatically get a car. It still has to come through us.
Yeah.
So my question is, how come there's nothing was last year's budget, or lease?
Because that was a housekeeping item. That actually was, in previous years, the directors would put it in with the supplies account. So...
So the director always had a car?
Yeah, yes, yes. Contractual services, um, pretty much, uh, the same thing with that. Some things have been taken out and moved to other accounts as well as, um...
We're not getting a description of the contractor, and that's a big cut.
Well, um, the other thing was is IT. The IT account gets the money that we would pay for our online registration. It used to be in that account. It's not any longer. It's in the IT department account.
How much is that?
So things have been moved and, um, I guess changed to different accounts, is the best way to say it.
Is that what you, you recommended for the budget?
I did. The reason that contractual services, I cleaned it up. There were some things that were posted in that account that really should go into its own separate account. One was the lease payment was being posted to contractual services. There was also some supplies, some staples, supplies that needed to be actually in supplies and not contractual services, as well as Comcast and some utility bills that really, and Conica, which are gonna be going under the IT budget going forward. So that's why I knocked that down.
Twenty-five thousand dollars worth?
I can give you a breakdown.
Okay, yeah, that'd be nice to have that.
Sure. I can show it to you right on screen if you'd like.
Okay, could you, no problem?
Sure. I just need that.
Council Chair, uh, Council Protam, while we're waiting, you know, the, the, the subject of cars came up, and there's, there's all kinds of rumors out there, different people having cars and not, um, we, that should go through City Council. Well, a purchase of a vehicle, yes. Who gets them? No. But we can still, you know, take charge of the vehicles and say, no, we don't wanna buy a new vehicle for, you have to use whatever we have. That's how it has always worked. Before, cars were just all over the place, and then council kinda cleaned that mess up a little bit when, um... Why is this car in the budget, then? Well, because it was there already. It was already there, and she, I don't think, started driving a car until she became a director.
Actually, the Parks and Rec Department has two cars.
Correct, you got the van?
Yeah, we have the van, and we use that for all of our programming and our events, and it, uh, helps with the building and maintenance department, so they don't have to do all of our lugging as well. But, um, we've always had a director's car because there's a lot of places that you have to go. I mean, um, the first year I was here, and we didn't have a, a car. We had a director's car, but not the other one. Um, I just ruined my vehicle. And so at some point, uh, after I came in nineteen eighty-eight, it was a few years after that, we went for a second vehicle. But, um, the one for the director, we're called out at night a lot, we're working late at night, we're going to the parks, and we're going to all the different buildings and facilities all the time. As Mr. Muscat mentioned, one of the cleanup things that, that were done is, um, we don't take the car home. It just stays at one of the facilities, and we pick them up and drop them off there.
Contractually, I think when directors were hired, they were given a car, but now we look at that closer. Something that... So we're not supposed to take them home, then?
No.
No. Okay, there's some, uh, that do take them home, like the police chief, uh, the fire chief, uh, fire marshal, things of that nature, and somebody from DPW that's on call will have the, the, uh, one of the trucks that he would need to go, uh, various jobs. So, uh, you know, we, we have to really watch that closely, okay? So, but they still get a car for her to use during the day, so that would be that, that, uh, three thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars for the year.
There, there's also an insurance issue if I'm driving my own vehicle and I'm doing city business, and that was the other thing, and all day I'm running everywhere.
Okay, as you can see up there, this is a list of all, it's everything that's in contractual services. You see Comcast, Conica, Comcast light a lot, Enterprise, Enterprise is the vehicle. All those things I removed out of that for this year, I didn't actually move them out of there. I'm just saying for next year to budget, I took those numbers out of there, and that's why contractual services is so low. I can print this for you if you'd like and send it to you.
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, I know it's a lot of work to do every budget, every department that way, but, you know, it'd kinda be nice to, when we see such a drastic cut, you know, over, over fifty percent cut, you know, on an item, it'd be nice to know why.
Sure. I, I think going forward, or at least once we can get things in, in place, I would highly recommend that you get, uh, regular reports from BSNA, so that you can see this stuff on a regular basis.
And maybe going for the future down the line. I was actually just having this conversation with one of my buddies who's in the state now, and he's going, explaining to me like how their budget process is.
Yes.
And so they get a process of, this is how much money we use, this is what we didn't use. They get cliff notes for every line item as to why this was changed, what's being moved, what's happening. So there are actual cliff notes for every single line item, and that is the state budget. Which you can, I, I mean, we all know, maybe a quadruple amount of times that are a mountain that we are. So, probably got about a hundred more people working on it, too.
Yeah, the software, software platform, uh, gives it to everyone, because they have the revenue estimating conference, you know, how much tax...
I mean, and that's just something to, you know, just to think about.
When we have this, they can email this, and we can have it.
I think a lot of this can be streamlined if you have access to BSNA, and then you can see things on a monthly basis on where the money is being spent, and, um, more reports.
Council Pro Tem?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Question?
In October, the twenty-sixth, we've got a lot of Sun Belt rentals. What kind of stuff are we doing in October with rental services?
That was for our Harvest Fest and our concerts. We had to rent generators for a lot of the programs.
I'm just looking at seventeen thousand plus. Sorry, I was concerned.
It wasn't seventeen thousand for rentals.
Yeah, some of it's being repeated, apparently, yeah. Okay. Thanks, Kim.
Any other questions regarding the contract services?
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright. Next, there's mileage.
What's that for, mileage?
Mileage is when an employee has to use their own car. And a lot of times, both the cars are being used, so a senior coordinator might have to go to one, go to the other building, and then they get paid mileage. I am encouraging them to use the second car, the van, more. So that's why that's, went down a little bit. Motor fuel is for when we're not able to get gas at the DPW yard, which has happened a few times.
Is there a reason why you can't get gas there?
Well, only when it was being repaired and stuff, and we've run into that a couple of times.
So this is just a placeholder?
Correct.
In case you need to go to a Shell station?
Or, you know, somebody or one of the employees waited too long and can't make it down there. We generally do get it at DPW, though.
Okay.
Senior trips, that's stayed the same. That actually is an account that is paying out our expenses for our trips, like tickets for the venues, or our motor coach costs, or our expenses with the restaurants and things like that. However, we bring in more revenue for that one than we pay out.
Speaking of senior trips, now, do we take in consideration what the seniors want to do? I know there was a little complaints about not being able to go to the casino. They want to do a baseball game instead, but they would rather do a casino.
We do, but as you know, you can't please everyone. We do. We are doing casino trips now. I didn't do them for years because we had different clubs, and each club did their own casino trips, and I didn't want to step on toes. We're now to the point where the clubs aren't doing individual trips, because a lot of the members of the clubs are older, and they don't want to take on the responsibility of planning a trip.
Okay.
So now we're doing casino trips.
Are we top?
Pro Tem?
Yes.
Does that mean that we're going to continue our casino trips in December?
Yes, I don't know. I don't know where that rumor started from.
Yeah.
But I, I did ask a few people, and they don't know either, but.
We, we do want them on senior days, last Tuesday of the month.
The only, the only thing that came up was we ended up having the casino trip land, I think, on a Tiger game trip date.
I think it was May.
Tiger date trips are set up way in advance. And with that, we just changed it and changed the date, and then went, went to a different casino, because the one casino they like to go to, they like to do it on senior day. So.
Yeah, firekeepers.
Councilman Wenzel?
Yes.
Are there any other things that you want to speak about, because it's five fifty-six right now, five fifty-seven?
Well, I just wanted to, you know, mention the full-time coordinator at the Eaton Center. We, I talked to the seniors there, and they, they all say, you know, why don't we have a full-time coordinator there? It's, it boggles me why we don't. I mean, we, we got a person there. He wouldn't go full-time, correct?
Well, she's part-time now. If it were to go into a full-time position, it has to be advertised at civil service, so you'd have to compile the list and then select from the list. But she would definitely be able to apply and test for it, just as our North End coordinator did. She was part-time, and then that position was turned into full-time. And then she tested and ended up the top person on the, on the list and was hired.
Because I think Eaton Center deserves a full-time coordinator.
I did put it in the budget, and that was one thing that didn't make it through.
Josie is doing a great job.
How much more do you need for, for that, for that?
Well, it's the pay, which is about thirty-five thousand, and then it's, the expensive part is the benefits. So.
What if we did two part-time positions?
Well, they have, they have one part-time now, so they, they don't need.
What's the part-time pay?
What is the part-time? Seventeen dollars an hour.
So does that come out to be for her part-time for the year? You should have that.
I have that.
You should have that figured out.
Well, I mean, regardless, our seniors deserve.
It's thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand?
Is, is what it'd be. But that's just the pay. That's not the benefits. No, that's if it were turned, be turned into full-time.
Yeah, but, but the part-time now is costing us what?
The same.
Well, if it's costing us the same, why don't we?
It's the same.
It's the same, except for the benefits. A part-time doesn't get the benefits, you know, like the pension and the, the, all the other stuff that comes with it.
Can we look at this at a different date? Because I'm with Tom. I think Eaton Center's been kind of short-changed in that respect, where the North End has Berwyn, and they have a full-time coordinator. Coordinator there, and Eaton does not. And, and my God, this is all one big happy family, I would think.
Council, Council, and I feel like, and with respect, I think this has been an ongoing issue.
Correct.
Let's just fix it. Budget for it, and that's it. Hire somebody.
Okay.
I, I would think so.
We have, I mean, the numbers you gave us earlier, I'm so sorry. I believe you said there was an overage of nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the budget?
That's right. That's, that's why this is only a tentative.
I, I'd like to see a revision on this.
We can revise this. That's why we're here.
I'd like to see a revision on this before it comes to a vote.
Council, Pro Tem?
Yes.
I don't know if it's rumor or not, Kim, but I understand that our temporary, our second person isn't thoroughly trained in the computer stuff, so our.
Yeah. You're talking about a receptionist that we're.
Yeah, she, she doesn't have.
We're dealing with right now.
She doesn't have the total computer skills, and I don't think she went through all the same stuff that the full-time lady did to get the job either. That's what I'm hearing.
We've got training of four thousand dollars here, so.
That's what I'm looking into for her.
Yeah, okay.
For the person you're talking about. I, I am taking care of that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Also, I'm so, so sorry. I just have one last question about this. I know that I went to, and I spoke with a couple of the residents that were talking about the fence around the tennis courts. Are we budgeting for that this year?
The money for the tennis courts is not in, but I do have.
I know we've promised, we've been promising the residents that we were going to, and I know there's some of them that.
In which tennis court?
That's, that's another thing that didn't make it through.
Richard A. Young Center.
That's, that's another thing didn't make it through, because, you know, there's only a certain amount of money for the budget, but I did put it in. I do have some capital outlay money for the can, or for a bunch of things in the recreation budget that you'll see later. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk to the schools to see if they can help, and then I'm going to transfer it to the recreation.
Can you also, on for the South End, do something with CDBG with Jamal?
Yes, I do have.
And so he can help?
I have funding from Tifa.
It doesn't, it doesn't qualify for Tifa funds, and then. Daily, yeah. Tifa funds don't qualify, or Richard A. Young does not qualify for Tifa funds, and it does not currently qualify for CDBG funds. And we just checked into that for the CDBG funds again. We'd have to wait another year to see what the census is and what it comes through. It's very close that, that it may, depending on the census, but if I can get the school to help, I have some money in my capital outlay in the recreation, and I would transfer it to the Richard A. Young budget to do the tennis, because I've, I've wanted the tennis courts every year.
Okay, so I, I, I would think that we're, we're going to add another, add to the budget for a full-time coordinator at Berwyn.
No.
Or Eaton, excuse me. And Council, Councilman Wenzel, is there any more that you need to take care of?
Yeah, there was just a couple of things. I mean, that was one of the main ones I want to talk about, but there's, there's issues, you know, on the South End, and, and, you know, this, this, this council, you know, sadly to say, they, you know, approve millions and millions of dollars for this golf course, and less than one percent of the residents of Dearborn Heights use the golf course. There's a park over on the South End with Dell Park, and it's in disarray. I mean, I took the kids there the other day. The, the equipment's rusted, dangerous, and it's, 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 it's right in the middle of the community. More people use this park than use the golf course. And I spoke with the director earlier and about repairing it, and she, she had that, she had some money put aside in the budget for it, but they were turned down. And they said all they'll have money for, for that park is to put a new mulch down.
And that's what I'm going to work on. Again, the Waddell's Park does not qualify for CDBG money or Tifa funds, which is just Westwood School District. But, you know, as soon as I get a minute, I'm going to try and start writing some grants.
Have we tried to get any grants? I mean, we should, you know, we, we.
I have not had the time to write any grants, because I've been short-staffed.
We, you know, we, we, I didn't approve any, any, not one penny to the golf course, but this, this council did. And this council, some of these members are going to ask South End residents to vote for them. And knowing this, I mean, millions and millions of dollars. I hate to beat a dead horse, but went to this golf course. Well, people on the South End are suffering with their parks, with the Ecorse Creek. It's, it's just, it's just a shame what's going on here. And so I can't see how some people sleep at, sleep at night with proving these things and.
Council Pro Tem, I just want to also add on to that, to Mr. Wenzel's thing, is that you have to keep in mind that prior to at least myself or Councilman Ahmad, I, I never approved the buying the golf course, right?
Not buying it.
No, but, but we bought it, and so the.
So does.
So, so it belongs, it belongs to the city, and so do the parks and everything else, right? But what, what did you expect us to do? At one point, you yourself was questioning why it was being neglected. So now we're no longer neglecting it, and we've. I, I just wanted to speak around it. I want to say.
Okay, go ahead, real quick, okay?
But, but if the argument is that, you know, we're mad that we invested money into it, well, I would, you were also upset that we were neglecting it. So, I mean, it's a lose-lose situation.
If we would have kept up, it wouldn't have cost us.
I do want to mention.
We're in a budget meeting here.
That's not a place.
Anything else. So that's not the, this is not the time or place.
I understand culture, but those comments remain.
And I understand.
I'm going to defend myself and anybody else on this council.
And I understand, and I feel the same way you do, no?
I do want to mention one more thing that actually is a really positive thing. Heather Lane Park does qualify for CDBG money. We were going to do some improvements on it this year, but they're going to be doing some widening of the creek and stuff like that, that Mr. Dib had, had planned. So next year, we'll be doing some major renovations with Heather Lane Park using CDBG funds. So I'm proposing pickleball courts, repairing the tennis courts there, a little parking area, increasing the lighting, and then increasing the play structure there. So that's down the pipe, just so you know, in, in the South End. And we did recently re-renovate the inside of the recreation center. We did a lot of work with that. The kitchen is finally up and ready to be rented out with the, the meeting room. We still have a few more things to do, but we actually have spent quite a bit of money in the last couple budgets I've had on Richard, Richard A. Young, which is positive. But, you know, things have been let go for so long that we're going to be playing catch-up for a long time, unfortunately.
And the reason that this budget we have to start thinking of is, we just heard it, not enough time to write grants. We need to have a professional grant writer in this city.
Definitely.
And a lobbyist in Lansing, because we're losing out on a lot of money. We need to get into the twenty-first century with that. So, but let's carry on with this. Is there any more, Councilman Wenzel?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
A Councilman, no, council.
I just have a few comments regarding the parks and regarding the funding that we could get from CDBG as well as Tifa. I do show here daily park improvements. We do get by, uh, daily park improvements. We're getting five thousand dollars from Tifa. And Van Born Commercial improvements, we're getting fifty thousand.
That's not for a park.
Van Born, Van Born Commercial.
That's not for the park.
Okay. All right. I also see on CDBG Van Houghton Park, there is improvements, including but not limited to play structure replacement and parking lot resurfacing. And Heather Lane Park in. Okay. So that is the play structure, bathroom, storage building, pickle courts and basketball courts. And Berwyn Senior Center improvements, including but not limited to the HAVC installations and energy efficiency window replacements. Senior Citizen Service, including the Eaton and Berwyn Centers activities, one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars.
That's for state.
Okay.
Okay.
But there is funding that is going to these. That's what I wanted to make.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, we're, we're losing some because we can't, we're not writing grants.
Well, and the only problem with it is there's only certain areas that qualify for each of those, Tifa and CDBG. But next year, there's, there's hope when we get the new census from what Mr. Jamal has told me.
Council, Councilman, Council.
Thank you, Councilor. The courts at Richard A. Young have supposed to be refinished for over fifteen years. The county commissioner, the grant money, both Diane Webb and David Kenezic have the money available, but they sat there and been neglected. The Heather Lane Park is four blocks from where the Richard Young Center is. So I'll check with Director Jamal. But, and then there's the natural resource grant money. I know there's a problem with staffing, but the facilities are there. They're just, the tennis, those tennis courts, the school district has already said that they want to use those courts in practice, the D seven.
That, that is why I'm going to take the money that I have in the budget for the recreation department and hopefully use that for a match with the schools. If the schools will come in half, we'll have the tennis courts. That's what I'm planning to do.
So you expect to see them up and running in, what, a year, year and a half?
I can't promise anything. The last time I met with the schools, they didn't have the funds available. But if they do this year, then, yeah, yes. We already have the specifications written. We already have the designs from the last time they went out for bid. They went out to for bid, and then the, the price came in way higher than what was allocated in the budget, so they couldn't do the project.
We, there was a, a lot of discussion about the roof on the structure on the side for the, for machines that drag the field, but it was, it was like a hundred and some thousand was paid. Do you remember that?
Yeah.
But the, the money from the county commission, the grant money, that's been available for those tennis courts for.
No, it hasn't. I, I have no idea what you're talking about.
First, under Commissioner Webb, and then under Commissioner Kenezic.
We get monies from the Wayne County Park Village monies that come back.
That's what I'm talking about.
And those have been allocated for the Van Houghton Park project, and they have to be used for what they're allocated for. We've, to my knowledge, not had any ever allocated to the tennis courts from Wayne County. If that, if those are the funds you're talking about.
That was the money that put the play structure in at Heather Lane Park. It's right on there. It's right on the structure.
Correct.
Thank you, Councilor Pro Tem.
Councilwoman?
One last gripe we have with Eaton Center. They want a new sign that's lit up. Can we work that with the seven, maybe?
That is actually on my list for the CDBG funding, to get a new marquee sign at both centers. So it's just, we're dealing with the priorities first, and the priority first is heating and cooling, and, and we just are working on the, the specifications for the bathrooms. And then we've got to work on getting some of that tile removed and replaced that is missing in the, some of the rooms because it's.
That brings up one quick thought here. We're dealing with a lot of seniors at both centers, and these schools for little kids. Is there a possibility of taller toilets?
That's what the specifications are that I'm working on this week.
And I've been talking to, uh, the Director Jamal about that, so.
Yeah.
That's.
Well, we're working on, I just had a meeting with him yesterday. I'm working on the specifications for the rest of the bathrooms. As soon as they're finished, then I send them to Mr. Jamal, and he's going to put the whole packet together, and we're going out.
I'll let the people know we're working on it. All right.
I have told them that at the meetings that we've attended to.
Those Thursday meetings.
All right, so.
So we can add a little bit, once we put in the, the full-time coordinator, that's going to raise our bottom line about another what?
She said thirty-five thousand for a full-time plus benefits. I would say close to forty.
Forty thousand.
I don't know if that's accurate.
Well, that's actually just FICA and, and salaries. When we have, have to start allocating.
Close to seventy.
Hospitalization and all that. Yeah, you're close to seventy.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to say seventy.
Because I usually add thirty percent to their salaries.
Okay, so are we ready to go to the next one?
Yes, the next one is on Richard Young Center, page twenty-seven.
You don't want to continue throughout this, because there is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we did put in here for capital outlay.
Yeah, we didn't go through this yet.
You didn't go through the whole thing?
We didn't finish the.
What, on page, on the?
Page 26.
Yeah, capital outlay, 100.
So we left off at rec programming.
What's that for?
I said we left off on the recreation programs. That's the money that's allocated for all of the programs that we run. Tree lighting, the concerts, the, um, the other events, the mother-son, the dances, all of these special events that you see that I pass on to you.
You do a great job with all of those. I am gonna have to make a quick recommendation. And, and, and it's a little comical, but I know our neighboring city was taking shots at our Christmas tree last year. And I said, flooded Twitter, flooded social media. Black Tree did pass it, was old.
Okay. Do you see the footnote on this page? The trees, that trees, that actually refers to a Christmas tree.
Where? I still don't see that.
It's in, it's in the blue.
Right at the bottom.
So I did budget for a Christmas tree.
Yeah, okay. I can't wait to let them here know that we're gonna come back.
But last minute, I didn't have any choice. I had lost everything at, at Warren Valley last minute. So we had to come up with a tree. And, yeah, it leaned a little bit, but.
It was a perfect tree, but the way it was, you know, trimmed, I guess.
It was actually one of the best tree lighting ceremonies that we had, so.
Well, the ceremony event was beautiful. The tree itself, I think, was, uh.
Well, don't you guys ever remember?
It was a vision.
Snoopy and peanuts and their Christmas tree?
I was gonna say that, but.
Hey, are you, are you two, are you that young that you don't remember it?
I've been watching.
Go home and Google it, okay?
Charlie Brown had a wonderful tree.
I'm surprised this old man even knows what Google is.
I know more than you, you think you know. Hopefully you'll get to be my age with my wisdom.
I, I pray for that, honestly. Raise a great.
You're getting there.
So anyway, the, the tree was budgeted for, so.
Thank you.
And, and I did receive the funds for that, and it is a priority, so.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Are we ready to move on?
Going to Spirit Fest, which is now the Dearborn Heights Summer Festival, or Summer Fest, we're gonna call it. $43,000. Repair and Maintenance, $12,000. And then you've got utilities for Eaton, $25,000, for Berwin, $40,000.
Is that, excuse me, that repair and maintenance, does that count the coffee pot at, at Canfield? It doesn't work?
At Canfield, the infamous coffee pot?
Yeah.
Yes, but you know, a lot of people aren't even requesting to use that.
Well, I'm just, I just added for a little humor, that's all.
And we actually basically don't use it anymore because we don't have really large events there any longer. But I'm gonna name that coffee pot after you, Ray. Training, $4,000. And then this is the capital outlay for $150,000 that she was talking about. Obviously, I'm not gonna be able to do everything in the footnotes, but I'm gonna take this by priority and see where we need to go. Obviously, the tree is the highest priority, but next is if I can get money from the schools, I'd rather move all of those funds to the Richard A. Young budget and get the tennis courts.
And you have new windows for where?
For the Canfield Center. You can actually just reach out the windows. They're so bad. So that's another thing that we're gonna be.
Can I also go ask you, and I've had a resident call me, I know the Canfield Center across from ALI. I've had residents call me, I think they reached out to you guys. And anytime they ask, like, if they wanna do, like, an event or a birthday or something, they're always constantly being told that they cannot do it because they have gymnastics set up and in order to do everything, like.
We have a room.
Just one second. And, and really, it seems like gymnastics is the only priority for that facility.
We have a large room, or meeting room, that people can rent. As far as the gymnastics program is one of the big, biggest and best programs that we have, but they don't do just gymnastics. They run a day camp for us. They run strengthening classes. They run all kinds of different activities, not just the gymnastics. In, in comparison to the rentals versus the revenue that we get for the gymnastics, we bypass what we received in rentals tenfold, money-wise. So, you know, with the programming that they're able to offer, if we lose that, we lose a lot of our youth program.
I just wanna give you a quick number, by the way. So I did a little bit of research. Across the street at Wise Academy, they have a gym. Do you know how much money that they profited from that gym in one year? $350,000.
Right, but they have a full-size gym, and it's probably a wood floor. We have ceramic, not ceramic tile. We have regular vinyl tile. It's not a regular-sized gym. We have no storage where we have to put everything around the side. I've been there for years, since 1988, and I've seen both sides of it. This is the best use for the space that we have.
I remember when that was built, we tried to play basketball there, and it did not work out.
You can't, because we, we have no place to store anything.
Even if we did put our wooden floor, if we did, you know, update it.
Well, I, I think that.
You need to add space for storage.
I think the city's got bigger, bigger plans for a recreation center.
And we, a couple of years ago.
I wish I knew about it.
With the previous director, I actually just turned those plans over to Mr. Dib. They are for the new recreation center. When Jennifer Condon Home was Governor, we were supposed to have some funds allocated from the state to do that. So we have the plans, we have the specs and everything for the building. If we ever get the money, then, you know, we'd have plenty of room for everything.
I believe Redford received $19 billion for our new recreation center. He's gonna help us get $19, $20 million.
I've been looking into how they did it, so you're a little bit.
And if he doesn't, we'll just take it out of his pay. You're gonna work a whole year for free.
Just name it after me, we're good.
That's fair.
Okay, so that's it for the recreation. You wanna move to Ray now?
Yes, we'll go now to Richard Young Center on page 27. We could wrap this up real quick here tonight.
Okay. Salaries, $278. We have there just the full-time recreation coordinator that is there. Because that's not part-time, so. And then we've got part-time. Again, that went up because we've had to increase our salaries for the hourly employees.
The part-time went up, you said?
I hear part-time.
You're looking at recreation, so you need to go to Richard A. Young.
I'm sorry.
Page 27. Yeah, I'm trying to figure out where your numbers are coming from.
I'm sorry, before, before we move on, the capital outlay, did we say what, what does that cover? Yeah, she's, she's potentially.
But I'm not gonna be able to do all of that with that. That's what I requested, but that's not the amount, so I have to prioritize them.
Yeah, she lost 100,000.
There we go.
It's only 10,000, but it's 150. It's 10,000, not 150, not just for the tree, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, but she also has the tennis courts and all the projects that she has.
Yeah. So going to Richard A. Young, I'm on the correct page now. $46,000 for salaries. The part-time salary, $135,228. Overtime, $2,000. The rest is supplied by the controller with the benefits. Supplies, $7,000. Utilities, $50,000. Contractual services, $15,000. Mileage, $500. Recreation programming, $20,380. Repair and maintenance, $11,000. Training, $300. Capital outlay, $10,000. And footnotes, as you can see, that's what I requested, you know, your questions about the tennis courts. Men's sauna needs to be replaced. And then we need a new meeting floor because it has that old wood floor in it. But we have to prioritize again. And we did do this last year a lot at Richard A. Young, actually the last two years with renovating the rec center. So, but like I said, if the school has money to help us with tennis courts, I'm gonna be transferring that money to do the tennis courts. So that's what my plans are.
Now, now with the repair and maintenance, is that for outside contractors to come in and work?
That's for, like, if we need our, our whirlpool mechanical stuff repaired. So it's a subcontractor that, yeah, we called that comes in and repairs something. That's basically what that is for.
Okay.
Or to have our coffee pot fixed.
You call me for that.
So, Madam Controller, help me understand this. On my capital outlay, it says recommended budget is $10,000. And in the footnote amount, it says 150. Is that correct, or?
Uh, yeah, because that's what she had requested. Actually, we had taken out $150,000 because we just didn't have it in the budget. You asked it, yeah, she had actually requested $492,900.
Right. But how come it's mentioned in the footnote amount and is under the recommended budget?
I can't answer that because it doesn't make sense to me. Why is that? Do you?
Doesn't make sense.
I, I, I thought the same thing. So I thought, oh, I gave you 150. It's in the recommended budget. But when I added it up, it wasn't there.
So last year, I believe, it was the director, when we were asking, she requested X amount of money.
And it was.
It wasn't there, and we didn't know how much. And Councilman Tom Wenzel asked Mr. Supura to give us an updated one, showing us exactly how much money she requested for and how much she really got. I don't know if you remember last year with Mr. Supura, I think the clerk had the similar issue where she requested, like, she was like, you know, $150,000, but she went in and getting $20,000. And we didn't know much that she requested. Nobody was really talking about it. Do you remember that? And she had to go back to the meeting. So I think that's where, I think that's where that was left over.
But I don't know about the, like she said, she doesn't know where the.
Because the 150,000 doesn't add up to, to what this is right here.
But what I requested was the 492, and those were the items that was encompassed in that amount of funds.
So I, so I believe this is, needs to be corrected, Madam Controller?
The $150,000 that is in there is, as a placeholder, I could remove that, but it is not added in to the total of the $356,000.
Any other questions from council members? Any? I guess we're all finished then. We can all go home and, and correct. Um, thank you for correcting me. Any public, any people from the audience would like, you got two minutes?
Hi, guys. Great job tonight. Super fast. Love it. Rachel LaPointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. Shall I wait for you, Mr. Muscat?
Hang on one second, please. I'm gonna turn this thing on. I gotta wait for it to connect. And we'll go here and start after you give your name.
Rachel LaPointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. With the clerk and elections, I know our, a couple of our council people do serve on the election boards, and I'm sure you guys are in agreement with me that a pay increase would be great. Because we do a lot of hard work on elections, and we absolutely deserve an increase, I think. And I think that would really help to bring in new people and hire more people. And I would love to see more young people get involved. So it's super fun to work elections. I, I love it. Good news for you, for parks, D7 does say they have a healthy fund balance, so hold them to that. I will push them on that, too, because the kids need the tennis courts, for sure.
So you're talking about the school?
Yeah, the school district. They just talked about finances.
You're talking about dance club.
No, no, the school district. Talk to them, because they talked about it last night. Then the only sort of maybe more challenging thing is, I do see some liability issues with the park equipment at Waddell, and then the bleachers at Richard Young. My, one of my kids played basketball with D7. Those bleachers are, I'm, I was afraid I was gonna get injured every single game. They're all falling apart. They need to be fixed. It's, it's kind of absurd, and it's embarrassing. Like, there's a lot of people at those games, and I'm like worried we're all gonna just come crashing down.
Well, what I don't like about them, it's, it's the pressure-treated lumber, the old pressure-treated lumber, which is very carcinogenic.
Oh, yeah, that's another big risk.
So, I mean, the new, the new, the new pressure-treated lumber is not carcinogenic, and that's something that should be a priority, a safety priority.
Yeah, I mean, the top ones, they're like falling in. It's real, it's so dangerous.
And, and we probably should have some sort of inspection on them. If they're bad, get them taken off and roped off or something.
Are inspections required?
That's a good catch.
Are inspections required at all? I don't know.
They aren't required, but I know that we have some staff that has been certified in, at our DPW staff, and they, and they look at the stuff.
Good. And then similar with Waddell Park. So St. Sebastian School closed. They renamed the parish, and then they got rid of their playground. I live right across the street from there. So that means Waddell is now the closest park to any of the families that live around that neighborhood, around St. Sebastian, Maria Garde. And Councilman Wenzel's right, it is extremely dangerous. There are a lot of giant screws sticking out, rusty screws. I, I don't feel safe taking my kids there anymore. And considering my kids are now big enough to bike around the neighborhood on their own, I, I don't want them to go bike, hang out with their friends who live a block away, get a giant rusty scrape, need to get a tetanus shot. Who knows what could happen? I mean, kids will be kids, and I'm prepared for a lot of stuff, but if we can kind of avoid it, I would prefer that. And I would hate to see a lawsuit happen if a kid got hurt. So I really think that if we can find a way to maybe pursue grants, I'll, I was thinking about taking a grant writing course. Maybe I should prioritize that. So I can help you guys out with that, maybe. But, yeah, I think that should be kind of bumped up a little bit, because safety is a big issue. But, yeah, that's it. Great job tonight, guys.
Thank you. Got some extra time today, because my fat fingers.
Happy Easter.
Yeah, happy Easter to you, too. We have, anybody else? We have one on Zoom, I believe. Ms. Clerk, can you? Mr. Drapkowski, go ahead.
Good evening, council members. Sorry I got to this meeting late.
Name, and name, please.
Vince Drapkowski, Columbia Street. Wayne County Mission, Dearborn Heights. I got to this meeting a little late, and I didn't get to hear the entire conversation or discussion. But I was going through the budget, and the only place I found the golf course was in the general fund. My question, since it's a recreational type of facility, why isn't there some supervision or, or budget line under the Recreation Department for that facility?
That's a good question. It's something that I think we've all been pushing for, of having the golf course under the umbrella of recreation. But that's, I guess, something that we, as a council, need to have a talk with, and something I'll be talking to Council Chair. Maybe we can set something up with the Recreation Director and the administration to see how we can work this out. Because under Recreation, we may be able to be getting some other funds available to us in, in that respect. So it's, it's worth for us to go, you know, spend an hour, hour and a half in a study session on this. So that, we'll take that under advisement, sir. And thank you. If you wanna continue, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to add one thing that I wanted to bring up, which, which I was gonna bring up anyway. You know, with, which I was gonna bring up was what you said. If it being, if it's under the Recreation Department, there's plenty of grant monies available under programs, I'm sure, for recreation and summer youth programs and stuff. So that that's one thing that we could take advantage of. And the other thing that, like I have said for years and years and years, this city hasn't had a full-time community and economic development director for at least 20 years now. The last full-time director or community economic development person was Carmen Oliverio. And I thought Mr. Jamal was supposed to be taking that position on as well, but obviously, that's not the case. So.
I believe he, he is the director of.
Played his budget for.
He is the director of that, Vince.
And, and Carmen is the director of Tifa.
Tifa.
Carmen was.
Yeah, Tifa, that was Carmen, Carmen Oliverio was Tifa, and Hassan Jamal.
Before Carmen Oliverio took on the director of Tifa, he was the, the community and economic development director and the block grant writer. Trust me, I worked under that department.
Councilor Chair.
Are, are you done, Mr. Drapkowski?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Well.
You're finished, then.
You want to?
Well, I was just gonna say that Tom Roscoe is the new person in charge for Tifa. And he will be a speaker along with Kim, our rec person, at the next South Dearborn Heights Civic Association on the 25th, 7:00 PM, 3335 South Beach Daily. Hey, I threw it in.
But, you know, for. But, you know, for, kind of for the record, I truly believe that, you know, as, as good of a guy as Mr. Oliverio was, we did lose out on a lot of grant money, and Hassan Jamal is the one that's really brought in a tremendous amount of money for this city since he's been the director previously and now. But I'd have to look all of that up to make that statement. Okay. Well, I, I made the statement, but I'd also have to go look at it. If I make a mistake, I'll be the first one to raise my hand and say I made a mistake, okay? But the next one is iPhone. Can we? Can we?
Does Vince have something else?
Excuse me, Vince, did you have something else? Can you, can you please do Vince instead?
Right.
Vince, hang on, iPhone. Vince has got one more thing to say.
Well, I just, I just want to, trust me, when I say Mr. Oliverio was a grant writer, he was, because I worked under that department many years ago.
Well, I remember Mr. Oliverio.
Yeah, and he also started the, the Semtah program over there with, that's, the grant money was used to start that.
Okay.
And I remember a trip going to Washington to get that funding from, or for, for the city. So, but yeah, I, we need a, a full-time grant writer.
Thank, oh, absolutely. Thank you.
And I, I know Tom is the director now, because I also worked under his department several years ago. So I'm very well-versed in what's going on in this city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
iPhone? Name and city?
Yeah, I am Mr. Jamal. Just wanna make some correction to the record. I know that the clock is running. First, let's respond to my friend, Vince. I took over from Carmen Oliverio back in two thousand and four. He decided to retire and stayed only as the Tifa directors. I stayed with the city until two thousand and eleven, then I resigned, and I came back to the city in March two thousand and twenty-one as the director for budget and, and grant compliance. Then in January twenty twenty-two, I was the director for the community and economic development. And since being there, we did a lot of feel like we, we worked as a city almost, so far one million dollars that never been spent in the back since two thousand and sixteen or spent, and all get back to the city. And now we have seven million dollars in process, and so far, we have about three million dollars of CDBG being brought into the city and being spent. So that's the, that's the record, and I say that's the correct record. If anybody wants to challenge me, welcome.
I don't want to be the one to do that.
No, 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 Vince is my friend, and probably he was mixed up between the, you know, budget and grant compliance and me taking over after, you know, they reorganized the park. So maybe, maybe he just didn't, didn't recall that. Now, for the recreation department, yes, the focus on recreation after the pandemic and on the senior services. The budget, you know, being presented to you today was, it reflects last year, reflects the money already being budgeted. But I'm coming later with my action plan, the budget for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, and you can see about eight hundred thousand dollars being going into the recreation and, and the senior centers, includes generators that, you know, standby generators for both centers, and, you know, looking into very aggressive HAVC system, you know, and the standby gen.
Director Jamal, Director Jamal?
Yes.
We're, we're getting off base here for our budget, so please, your time is really up, and.
I am, I am done, but I am, I am willing to take any, any question. If, if my friend Dave wanna call me, he knows my cell phone.
Yeah.
If he wanna talk to me publicly here, I am welcome, welcoming him to, to say whatever he likes.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else on Zoom? Seeing none? Meeting's over.
Just happy Easter, everyone.
Happy Easter, everybody.